Eight thirty-three, we'll start the regular meeting of the town, the Cannon Board of Selectment, Tuesday, December first, eight thirty-three AM. This is a virtual meeting, broadcast in channel seventy-nine and also live streamed on channel seventy-nine. Before we start the agenda, I'd like to move that we amend the agenda to add two appointments for the Board of Finance and the Ethics Board. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda to add those two items?
So moved.
All in favor? Kathleen seconded, Dick moved. The, this is a virtual meeting and we will take public comments by email, sent to our VOS distribution at newcanonct.gov email address. And if we receive comments, we will read them in the course of the meeting or before the meeting ends. So the first item on the agenda, I don't have any comments yet, Tucker, you'll be watching for them. Is the approved four minutes from the regular meeting on November seventeenth. Comments or corrections on the minutes?
None here.
I move, we approve the minutes, second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Tiger, your, item three is a backhaul purchase.
Alright, that's a, this is for the Highway Department. This is to replace a nineteen ninety backhaul, which is almost impossible to get parts for. It was a fiscal year twenty capital item. We've been working through specs and talking to different manufacturers and suppliers of this for about a year now. Highway Department has been working on it quite diligently. We started off at the pricing at around three hundred and ten thousand dollars. We got it down to two eighty. So we'd like to recommend the purchase of a new backhaul from Bar Sales. The cost is two eighty-eight, five forty-nine oh eight, minus a trade-in of eight, five, four, nine, oh eight, for a total of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Questions for Tiger on this?
What was the budget? Marker?
Two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Exactly. They came in with a trade-in of eight thousand dollars. I said, sorry, we're five hundred and forty-nine dollars and eight cents short. So I said, if you want it, you can have it. So.
Excellent.
I move, we approve the request from Public Works to purchase a backhaul AC thirteen from Bar Sales Inc. for a net price of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars after a trade-in of eight thousand, five, forty-nine, oh eight.
Second here.
Discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Kevin, did we skip over item two on the appointments, or do you want to move those last?
I didn't place them in the agenda, so.
Oh, they showed up on our iPads, it's number two, so.
But that's the, that's the tablet, it's not the agenda.
Right.
Okay.
John's gonna take, John's gonna do the loader purchase?
Good morning. So this will be a replacement of an old skid steer, at least twenty-five years old. The Avant Loader is, articulates in the center. It's small, so we can use it on sidewalks. We can also, well, it will come with pallet forks, flail mower, all-around machine where a skid steer actually skids to turn. Since this pivots in the center, it will not dig up turf and things like that. So we recommended purchasing this from Westchester Tractor for a total of eighty-one thousand, four twenty, and it's, it's money, the funds are available for this purchase.
Questions for John? Here are no questions, I will move, we approve the request from Public Works to purchase an Avant six forty loader with cab and attachments from Westchester Tractor for two eight, for eighty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. Do I have a second? Kathleen?
Kathleen just seconded.
Discussion?
None here.
All in favor? You got yourself a new.
Thank you. Purchase.
Tiger, you've got another piece of machinery here.
This is, uh, these are a purchase for replacement parts for our ODB leaf system. We have four separate units for the Highway Departments, our lifeblood during leaf pickup. And there are various parts that, that wear out, that we need replacement, and the total cost was ten thousand and twelve dollars, which caused us to come before the selectmen.
Questions on this?
In the budget, Tiger?
Yes, it's part of our equipment refurbishing line item.
Good.
I move, approve the request of Public Works to purchase replacement parts, parts from ODB Company for the ODB leaf system for ten thousand dollars and twelve, ten thousand, twelve dollars. Have a second?
Second.
Kathleen, discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Tiger.
Thank you.
Granite curbing.
Right, this is a, this is the secondary part of the purchase for the water tower parking lot. Excuse me, the plans call for granite curbing to outline the parking area. And then the traffic islands or the islands that are inside interior to it. We found that if we utilize blacktop, curbing tends to have plow damage and requires maintenance over time. This also kind of allows us to standardize the parking lot whereby over at Lapham Community Center, we've got granite curbing or Belgian block curbing around the islands and around Lapham itself. Over at Irwin, we used granite as well. The entire high school is done with concrete curving that has a square profile, but the concrete curbing tends to chip and fracture and degrade over time, whereas the granite will last a lifetime. So we're recommending a purchase of the materials from North Carolina Granite for twenty-nine, four oh nine, eighty-six. Get the same problem last time whereby William Stone is not taking any additional orders through the year, but North Carolina's pricing was nearly exact to what they had quoted prior.
Tiger, what's the alternative cost for asphalt?
It's lower, but the maintenance costs are much higher. We'll be, we, every couple of years, we'll have to go out there and replace it. So over time, this, this purchase far outweighs the, the, the blacktop itself.
And also, Tiger, I mean, aesthetically, it's preference, I assume the preference is, is to go with granite?
The preference is, yeah, as far as, you know, it's overall look and feel, so it would be, you know, it's, we have a six million dollar, you know, turf field complex next to it. It would be nice to have something, you know, commensurate with that, you know, it's just a parking lot, but it definitely dresses up the parking lot, dresses up the area.
What's the timeframe for finishing this whole, this whole project?
That, this one, we won't be able to do until the spring. Well, he'll be working on it through the winter, but we won't pave it till the spring. The plants are gonna close on us sometime in the next three weeks. And he's working diligently on River Street. He's still running into problems with rain, so we still have to finish paving. Phil Creston Village, Top Course, through River Street, and then come over to Waveney. So we're feeling it will be able to pave that in the, in the early spring.
Tiger, are there only these two, I guess, North Carolina and William Stone? Are they the only?
Two most competitive, yeah. There are others that are basically redistributors, where they buy from these companies, and we just buy direct. There's Swens and there's some others, but the, these are the two most competitive, and they have the nicest material as well.
Okay.
So with that, I move, we approve the request from Public Works to enter into a contract with North Carolina Granite Company for twenty-nine thousand, four oh nine, eighty-six to purchase granite curbing for the Waveney Water Tower Parking Lot Project. Second?
Second here.
Discussion? All in favor? That brings us to
Thank you.
Joe and Dan on the Saks Middle School Boiler Replacement.
Good morning. So this recommend, so this recommendation is part of the Saks Middle School CHP and Boiler Project. One of the three boilers has failed, and the other two are at the end of their usable life. So we expedited the design and bid of the boiler plant replacement project. We received four bids, three bids between five hundred and sixty-eight thousand and six hundred and fifteen thousand. So it was good, close competitive numbers. A comprehensive proposal review has been performed by the projects consulting engineer, OLA, and the town. It is our recommendation that the project be awarded to Allstate Construction. They are the lowest bidder for the combined costs for phases one and two. And they've confirmed they have a complete scope and indicated they have everything that's in the RFP in the contract documents. The work will be performed over the next couple of months with boiler commissioning in February. So the Department of Public Works and New Canaan Public Schools requesting approval to enter into a contract with Allstate Construction in the amount of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars with plus a contingency of twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixteen for a total of two hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars to complete phase one of the Saks Boiler Plant Replacement Project, and these funds are currently available.
How are they available? I thought the budget for the one boiler was a hundred thousand dollars. And I'm, I'm a little confused, Dan, too, as to how we didn't have boilers for Saks in the five-year capital plan for the Board, for the Board of Education, other than one boiler for a hundred thousand dollars. So how are the funds available?
So could I, could I step in for, for, for that one? So we're only, we're only asking for one of the boilers for two hundred and twenty-seven thousand plus.
But the budget in the cap, in the, in the, per budget for capital was a hundred thousand dollars.
Correct.
It was a hundred thousand dollars as part of the seven hundred and seventy-five thousand total.
So, so to go to, if you want to drill down into the budget real, real quickly, sorry, we have, sorry, lost my sheet here. Two hundred, I'll have to get to the thing. We have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, for this project, and the history has shown that we have for one seventy-five KW CHP, we have the knowledge from the wastewater treatment facility that it costs four hundred and forty thousand dollars for one seventy-five KW CHP. So if you add the two together, we're right at our budget amount. And that's what's, that's what's currently in, in design, and we'll be able to, we're gonna get a preview set of the design this week for the CHP. And we will go out to bid with that in another, another two to three weeks. And it's expected to come in four forty, thereabouts, which would leave enough money for the entire project.
Well, I mean, this is really a matter for the Board of Finance, because, you know, estimating a boiler a hundred thousand dollars that it comes in is two twenty-seven, and then the other two, which were not even in the five-year plan for, to replace it all. Now we, I assume the Board of Ed is gonna ask for that for next year's budget. Anyway, it's a, it's a, it's a Board of Finance issue, but I think seems like it's not great estimating as to what the future class of projects are gonna be, gonna be, so.
Kathleen? Yes, just somewhat related to Kevin's question, you mentioned this is one out of three, so what's the estimated replacement time for boilers two and three?
Dan, if you could clarify this, but I believe they're coming forward next, next year.
Yeah, that was the plan to replace the boiler that's down now, and then do the other two later in the year or summertime after the heating season.
Assuming the Board of Finance, you know, puts them in the budget.
How old are the other two boilers?
The boiler plant was renovated in ninety-seven with the project at the school at the time.
And one's down now, right?
Yes.
One needs replacement now.
Right.
Is, is there an issue here, too, of the type, the type of boiler, are these condensing boilers rather than just regular old-fashioned boilers?
They are condensing boilers. And we'll get a couple, we're, we're anticipating getting some incentives because of that, some rebates.
Okay. Already.
Sorry, Kevin, this one, any other boiler issues in either the elementary or the high school that are not in the forecast?
In the five-year plan, the elementary schools have been projected to, for need to replacement over the next five years as well.
How about the high school?
The high school, I think it extends out longer than that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Kathleen, we've had problems with boilers, as you know, with Lapham Center and stuff, they,
Yeah.
they don't always reach their useful life, but
Right.
And we are upgrading the, the technology here to be condensing boilers. I'm not sure what it does. Is it energy efficiency or just they make hot water better?
Energy efficiency. They go from seventy-six to almost ninety percent efficient.
Okay. With that, any further questions? I move, we approve a request from the Department of Education and the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with Allstate Construction for two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one fifty-six, plus a contingency of twenty-two, seven, sixteen to complete phase one of the Saks Boiler Replacement Project. Second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you, Dan and Joe.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Cheryl on? This is, this is Jack's, now, good morning, Jack.
Good morning.
Could you explain this contract?
Sure, um, we're gonna do a an assessment or a test for new supervisors. Lieutenant Mike Beatty has retired as of yesterday. We need to fill his slot. In order to promote somebody from inside, we have to have what is called an assessment center, which is slightly different than a written test, which we've done in the past. We have, we would like to contract with Resource Management Associates out of Illinois. They are very experienced in this kind of testing. They've done about five hundred tests in the past two years in twenty-five different states. They also work for Norwalk, Wilton, Danbury, and Stratford. So I do have experience with them. I have worked with them in the past. The assessment takes about five days to complete, and we will have a list that will be good for a year in case there are any other supervisor openings. And this money is in the budget.
So Jack, you said you have to conduct a job-related assessment. I assume that's a mandate?
It's in the CBA, yes.
Okay. When is that CBA, CBA up again?
June of next year.
That's what I thought.
Chief, will they be doing this virtually, or are they gonna become?
They will be coming out, they will be sending out a crew of people or one supervisor from Illinois, plus we will be using chief officers from the region that will be retained to help product or administer the exam.
And how many of your firefighters are expected to participate?
At least ten, I would think. I don't know for sure. It's optional.
Right. Okay, thank you.
I have no further questions, so I move, we approve the request from the Fire Department to enter into a contract with Resource Management Associates for twelve thousand, two fifty to conduct a job-related assessment. Do I have a second?
Second here.
Further discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Now we have Cheryl.
Yes, good morning. I would like to present Ryan Restivo. He, we had had an opening because of a retirement in the Parks Department. We put an ad out, received eighty-seven resumes. We interviewed thirteen, and Ryan rose to the top, as you can see from his resume. He has a Bachelor of Science from URI. In, he has worked in turf management. He currently works at the Weaver Country Club. He has been there since two thousand and fourteen, has worked for other towns, and I do believe will be a great asset to John's department. Tiger or John, I don't know if you have anything you want to add, but I definitely recommend him and think he would be a good addition for John.
Questions? I move, we approve the request from Human Resources to hire Ryan Restivo as a full-time Park Grounds man, too. Second?
Second.
For the discussion, all in favor? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Actually, Cheryl. John. Fire car number two, oh, this is Russ and Jack.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Our, our multi-purpose emergency manager director and assistant fire chief and head of the volunteer fire corps, Russ Kynes.
Yeah, so briefly, this is the standard upfitting of the vehicle. It's very similar to what police does every time they receive a new vehicle. It's the emergency lights, the siren. Actually, we had a number of the volunteer firefighters, as well as some of the career folks, help to take all the equipment out of the old car, so we recycled everything we could at no cost to the town, which will then be installed in the vehicle. And beyond the lights and sirens, it also has a command box in the back, which contains the air pack, which would be used to, you know, to go inside and fight a fire, as well as a whiteboard and radios to do incident command as well as track, you know, things like air management and things like that. The previous vehicle lasted thirteen, fourteen years, so it had a very good run. It's important to buy decent equipment, because then it will last that long, and it gets used. I mean, this vehicle was used when we had the transfer, underground transformer fires on Elm Street as the command post. It's been used at numerous fires on the front lawn, set up as command and safety, so in essence, that's what this is.
Any questions for us?
Yeah, so Russ, is my understanding, this is a Ford Police Interceptor?
That's correct. It's the same thing that, so Ford, I think, makes three government versions of the vehicles. They call it the Police Interceptor, because that's what it is. The one that was purchased was a bare bones, it's a bare bones fleet vehicle, but one that's built well enough to last for this type of work.
So we can't change it to Fire Interceptor on the?
No, I mean, if you want to put a badge on it, we possibly could. It will have a round L on the door as required by tax IRS law, so it'll have a, a fire marker on the door, but.
It, it's a good-looking ride.
I don't think anybody's seen one in red before, so.
Yeah, it's, it's really a bright red. It's, it's a pretty cool red. It's, it's a, it's a good car.
And it'll be put
And much, and much needed.
Okay, no further questions. I move, we approve the request from Fire Department to enter into a contract to purchase fitting out equipment for the two thousand twenty-one Ford Interceptor Utility Vehicle for ten thousand dollars, ten thousand, two fourteen, forty. Do I have a second?
Second here.
Further discussion, all in favor? Okay, thank you, Russ, and
Thank you all.
Chief Hennessy. That brings us to, let's look, slip in the two appointments. So the Board of Finance has a vacancy resulting from Bob Spangler's retirement after many years on the Board of Finance, and Chris LaBrisa has moved up to be a regular member, so we had a vacancy in, in Board of Finance. And, and we have Peggy Jay is not on, but she's hopefully listening in by channel seventy, I'm streaming. Peggy Jay was forced, I think, our first forced retirement by virtue of term limits in the Ethics Board ordinance. I think that's the only body that has term limits. But Peggy Jay did a fabulous job in our, our first team of Ethics Board members, and so the DTC has put forward Ally Van Ness as a proposed replacement. Both of these require approval by the Town Council under charter and the ordinance, so I move first the appointment of Victor Alvarez. Victor is a businessman, has great experience in, in the building trades, and actually former Wall Streeter, very business-oriented, and so I move, we approve Victor Alvarez for the Board of Finance. Have a second? Discussion?
I would just say Victor is, is going to be a great contributor to the Board of Finance. He's a terrific guy. I know we actually had a number of choices and but Victor, for various reasons, I read in terms of our chairman of the Board of Finance, really seeing a great fit in terms of the resources that we'll have available, so I absolutely recommend it, approve Victor.
Nick, do you have any? Should we go on this?
No, I would just, I would just thank Peggy, respect the Ethics Board, and, and Bob Spangler for their service in particular, you know, a special shout-out to Bob, who was, I think, critical in, in helping the town achieve this wonderful field system, new fields that we have, which is a public-private partnership, a significant component, very significant component of that coming from private donations. So thanks to both.
Okay. All in favor of the appointment of Victor Alvarez to the Board of Finance? And then the Ethics Board, Ally Van Ness is a lawyer. And great resume, great experience, been in town a lot of years, and being a lawyer, Nick and I approve of lawyer appointments, so especially for the Ethics Board. I I move, we approve Ally Van Ness to be a term-limited member of the Ethics Board.
I'll second, and also say that Ally's gonna, not only a good contributor, but a very good person, too, so I'm, I'm delighted to, to see her step up to this position, and, and with great thanks to Peggy Jay as well.
Yes. All in favor? Okay, that brings us to Keith Ritchie, who has been standing by for the parking discussion. The Parking Commission has some recommendations for our parking lots and our permit renewals. So I will give the floor to Keith, and as always, Keith has a presentation for us. I think he's a nine-page presentation.
Oh, but they'll, they'll go by very quickly. Good morning, everyone. Let me share my screen. Hopefully, you're seeing that. And I will go to a slideshow. So these are recommendations unanimously approved by the Parking Commission, and they were made in consultation with Kevin Tucker and Laura, meaning the Chamber of Commerce, and with input also from Stacy, the head of the Parking Department, who's on the call and helped me with these slides and ready to answer questions that I can't answer myself. This map, which was prepared years ago by the Chamber of Commerce, but still seems to be the best one that we have, I put in a little colors to help you with the nomenclature I'll use in this presentation. The areas in yellow are what we call our commercial parking lots. So that's the Park Street Lot, where you can see my cursor, the Playhouse Lot behind the movie theater, the Locust Lot on Locust Street, you know, not so far from the, well, basically across the street from the fire station, the Morse Court Lot behind the mobile station, there's a little bitty lot over here, we call the telephone lot. And then, of course, there's a, what's called here, the Center School Lot. In red, you see the commuter lots, which is the lumberyard lot, the railroad station lot, and Richmond Hill Lot. And if the map were bigger, it would be also include the Talman Hill Lot. That's just for you to understand the nomenclature, and I'll jump ahead for a second. The reason that the Locust Lot and the Center School Lot are also shown with a green line around them is because what we're presenting this morning is an integrated plan to try to encourage people working in downtown, who would normally be trying to park on Main and Elm and other places, and get them to try to park in these two lots, which you can see are more of the satellite lots, they're a few blocks away from downtown, particularly the Center School Lot. So that's just to tell you where we're going. So that's just to tell you where we're going. The background is due to the COVID crisis, parking permit renewals were extended indefinitely. So we normally have a parking permit process where we have a fiscal year from the middle of each year to the middle of the next year. We didn't, you know, when we went into COVID, we just stopped charging. We start, we stopped doing renewals. We stopped charging for metered parking. We stopped enforcing street parking time limits for a period. And then we started to reinstitute those on June the first and we gave warnings for the first two weeks. But now the two-hour time limit is being enforced. And I would note that the commuter lots remain largely empty as few people are commuting via the train. So we had some good news and bad news out of this kind of enforced experiment. Like the good news was it seemed that the downtown workers, because the parking, after the parking time limit started to be enforced, they started parking in Morse Court Lot and other lots, mostly in the Morse Court Lot. And that appears to have made more short-term parking available on Elm Street and Main Street. And that's been like a 20-year goal for us in parking. The bad news was the Morse Court Lot was so well-used that by 11 o'clock on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday and Saturday, that lot would be full. And I was checking that myself. And so we had some nearby merchants who complained that their customers were not finding a nearby place to park. So this is the first of these recommendations we're here to discuss. And this has to do with the commuter parking lots. So, you know, the question is, when do we start charging people again to park in those lots? And what we're suggesting is that the earliest date for starting to charge people would be April the first, 2021. Again, right now, no one's using those lots. So to charge someone to park in those lots is essentially charging them for their place in line when they actually start using those permits again. And these lots are pretty expensive. You'll see I have the figures later. But we didn't think that was right. You may differ, but so our family was pushed this back at least to April the first. And we hope that things will have sufficient return to normal by April, that people will be commuting by train again. If not, we might consider further deferring renewals. But again, we're saying at least not before our recommendation is not to start charging people until April the first, 2021. Now, we're moving on to the commercial parking lots and that's going to compose the rest of this little presentation. So we want to resume charging for metered parking in the commercial parking lots beginning January 1st, 2021. Now, that's consistent with your decision that was announced. It should be noted that while we thought maybe we might want to start earlier, we remember that we don't charge for metered parking on many days or the high shopping days leading up to Christmas. So it wasn't going to be really worth the trouble to make a change before the date, which we had already already been announced. When we do start charging, we want to start charging at the same fees that we were charging previously. Now, in that earlier world, we had only just started to become subject to the state sales tax. And we had thought about increasing the charges for metered parking to effectively pass that cost along to the people parking. We are not proposing that with this recommendation. We're saying leave the rates where they are, which in effect means that the town will absorb the state sales tax. At least for this period, we may want to and we will want to review what we charge for metered parking, either six months from now or a year from now, but we didn't think that this would be the time to make that change. We also recommend charging now for the Park Street Lot, the Telephone Lot, the Morse Court Lots at the permit fee rates previously approved for the 2021 fiscal year, which were not imposed, but prorated, of course, for the fact that it's only, there's only going to be six months remaining. And for for these regular annual permits, in this case, for a six-month permit, we will add the 6.35% sales tax. And here's the main focus here. We want to initiate a new experimental program of free downtown worker parking permits for the center and locus lots for the period beginning on January 1st, 2021 through June the 30th, 2021. And the idea is to make the other lots and street parking available for visitors and customers. So the way this will work is that any individual working in the downtown area who can show some kind of proof of that, or at least, you know, make that statement would have to apply, but they would receive a free parking permit to park in the center parking lot or the locus parking lot. So it's not that you can park there for free. You have to actually have gotten a permit to park there. Now, as part of what makes this work is the new technology with the license plate reader. So when you apply and you get a permit, you don't have to carry any kind of, you know, piece of paper with you or any kind of medallion. Your license plates are registered with Stacy's team and then they will know whether or not you have applied for and received one of these free permits. This is to try and make sure this is only for people that are working downtown. As you'll see with the figures, if this were done on a yearly basis, we would be giving up $78,000 of permit revenue for those two lots, $39,000 for the six-month trial period. Now, it's important to note that I'm saying assuming pre-COVID usage. I have no idea what usage will be as we kind of emerge out of COVID, whether we'll go back to those days or whether there'll be more parking, whether there'll be less, but that's, those are the figures we had. So those are the figures I use. Stacy and her team will monitor the usage and additional permit requests to see how the program is working. And then we'll reevaluate when we get toward the middle of next year and see if we want to extend this. If it's been a success getting these workers off of Main and Elm Street and out of the Morse Court Parking Lot, or whether it really hasn't accomplished much and we've just given up revenue. And speaking of revenue, these are some figures for your consideration. Going from left to right, those are the names of the permit, the parking lots, the total parking spaces in the lots, the permits that were sold pre-COVID, that the permit revenue for the fiscal year 2019 to 2020. So that's all pre-COVID data, the permit rates that we charge for each lot. And then you'll see I've stated separately what the sales tax would be that will be charged and then what the rates are, including the sales tax. So there are a number of different recommendations included in this overall proposal. I'm happy to discuss them further or you can put it up for a vote.
Well, first of all, does Nick or Kathleen have questions for Keith or Stacy? Or Tucker's in the parking business here as part of her duties as administrative officer and working closely with Laura. Who has not only the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce, but also on the Parking Commission. So I don't know if Laura's on as well, but.
Yeah, she is, I think.
I'm here.
Okay.
So so I think it sounds like a great idea to have this test program for downtown workers and trying to drive them to Locust and Center. I am, I am concerned, however, because I mean, I thought we were trending toward trying to get free parking downtown ultimately as as a goal. And now we've experienced that because of COVID and certainly, you know, that was a temporary outcome because of because of the situation, but I, I mean, Keith, I think you're saying, you know, you know, we've looked at this and we need to go back to where we were before, which is you go to Morse Court, you pay the money and hopefully you're in and out within two hours. Is that my understanding?
Yeah, yeah, I think you have it right. I mean, when we look to make it free, you're giving up an awful lot of revenue to make it totally free. And then when you make it, if you try to make it totally free, then you've lost the power to incent and to motivate. So the reason I call this an integrated plan is, so right now Morse Court, we're not charging for the meters. So everyone wants to park in Morse Court. It's very convenient. You can park there all day. So that looks great. But now we're having a problem that Morse Court is getting overused. So the plan is you start charging for these other lots. You know, first step was reimpose the parking limits on Main and Elm. Second is start charging for the metered in Morse Court. Start charging for these permits again in the very convenient lots. And so the lots that you're trying to get the people to move to, you're making those free. So now they have, it's a little bit of the carrot and the stick. The carrot is, hey, you can have free parking. You can park all day. All you have to do is fill in a permit. And the stick is, if you're going to try and jump around like you have traditionally, you're likely to get tickets if you're parking on the street, or you're likely to pay, you know, a fair amount of change over time to park in the metered parking lots.
So maybe I'm confused. Morse Court, there are no time limits now?
Uh, well, no, you can only pay for a couple hours. Here, Stacy, you want to handle that?
Currently, there is no time limit. They can park, somebody can park there all day.
Why not just, why not just apply to Morse Court what we do on Elm Street, which is two hours? Wouldn't that clear up the Morse Court problem and not charging it, assuming we don't charge anybody?
Morse Court is a meter lot, except for the business permits that we have there. Some people.
I know, but again, you know, my, I think I said a year ago, my, my desire would be for us to do what Westport does, which I think Darian does, which is to not charge. And I know there's a revenue, significant revenue component to that, but it's something I just, I had thought that like the feedback that I've gotten, that we've gotten, has been very positive with respect to, you know, quote unquote, free parking downtown. And I thought that that is the case with respect and I would defer to Tucker and you know, others with respect to whether the the business community, you know, has liked that. But I, you know, Kevin, we had talked about doing a study maybe of this and rolling in the financial impact as well as the goodwill aspects that that you get from having free parking downtown.
Yeah, Nick, let me, let me comment. We hired the consultant, parking consultant that came and counted spaces back in August. We then talked to them again in October and decided not to have them count again because, you know, this is a fool's game. The normal in the midst of COVID. And my objective was to try to figure out how to have free parking in the lots downtown. This is not a revenue game. This is much more to make people park where you want them to park at a price that makes sense. So the objective of getting workers, many of whom are lower income workers, restaurants and people, they may be part-time workers, to get them to park away from the business lots downtown. And if they don't, you know, if they take a free parking permit and then park somewhere they're not supposed to be parking, they're going to quickly get fines that will convince them they should be parking where we want them to park. So this is a balancing act. It's not a revenue game. These lots cost a lot of money to maintain. We have a lot of parking lots and but we got to, we got to make it work for shoppers and restaurant goers and also people who work in town, so.
Well, I mean, we've never been successful in driving the worker, the downtown workers out. It's just, I think we've been talking about it until we're blue in the face over the years. And so I'm certainly supportive of this, this trial run, at least with respect to the, you know, the workers.
Parking consultant recommended we experiment this time and they thought we have a system that works. But again, this is, it's hard to understand what the normal is, especially when commuters, if, you know, if they figure they could get a free parking permit in Locust Lot or or the Center School Lot and walk over to the train station, that wouldn't be productive either. So we got to figure out how to, we have to actually know who people are and where they're supposed to park. And we've gotten a lot more electronic, both with the license plate readers and our database of who's who and what their license plate numbers are that we can try to get them to park where we'd like them to park at a price that makes sense for them. Some people want to pay a premium price to park in the business lots for, they can do that. But that's a limited number of spaces. We probably won't expand that.
Can I add something here? Nick, you're right in that we have studied this to some extent. I mean, Laura and I did a couple of years ago, survey all of the downtown businesses that we had access to. And what we heard loud and clear was the only way we were going to get them off of Main Elm and such is to provide free parking. And we've seen that play out now here. The other thing is that a lot of people that we've spoken with, I don't think customers object to paying the meter for the time that they're going to be in town. What we find is the hostile situation that happens when they get a ticket and they didn't think that they were, you know, overtime and that and that kind of thing. But I think that when they go to one of our lots and can pay for the two hours and find a space and find a space that's close and that provides them the time that they can go and either run an errand or have lunch, I don't think they object to paying. I think it's more they object to not being able to find a space on Elm Street because they see all of the workers taking up all those spaces because in fact they are free.
Yeah. And just to extend it, they don't like it when they can't find a space on Main and Elm and can't find a space in Morse Court.
Right.
Because the workers are there too. Where we have this, we've had this historically underutilized center lot and locus lot, which, you know, would be in theory, the perfect spot to have downtown workers park in. Yes, we're giving up some revenue, but in terms of the other lot, it's not that much revenue for a great benefit of having, you know, more parking available for customers, which hopefully will encourage a more vibrant downtown.
Thanks for this. I think it's going to be a very important project. I think that's terrific. I just had a couple of questions. How many employees are we anticipating this will, will take advantage of these permits?
We don't have a real good idea yet. We're, that's one reason we're doing the experiment to find out how many will actually sign up and move over. We could say, and I can pull up the chart again, showing how many people had permits before that were paying these prices.
So I'm looking at.
Got to be more than that to make it worthwhile. Let me put it that way.
Right. So as I look at that, for instance, center lot, you have 237 permits sold. Are those all employees or businesses that have gotten permits for their employees?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
That's not entirely true. There's some, there's some people that moved over from the Talmadge Hill Lot and in order to take the train downtown. Not a lot.
Excuse me, we're only talking about three actually for that. So the majority is business.
Okay. And again, that's 237 are the number of employees, the slots that they would take, right, in center lot?
Correct. And we intentionally oversell, Kathleen, as you can imagine, when people work Tuesdays, Thursdays and that kind of thing. Yeah.
Sure. And with 172 spots, I guess. And we're going to be encouraging more than the 237. I know you can't estimate how many it will be, but okay, so potentially they could be not running out of space there as well. Is that right? Everybody.
And it's just like you see for the lumberyard lot, where you virtually, you know, we double sell that lot. You know, what you find is, you know, people don't park in these lots every day, even though they they want to have a permit to park, for the right to park there every day. We still, the center lot, have empty spaces every day, numerous empty spaces, even though it's oversold.
So are these permits that are for the central lot right now, are they being charged to the businesses or to the employees themselves or both?
Yeah, that varies. Some of the businesses cover them for their employees. Some of the employees have to pay them on their own, pay for the permit on.
Okay. And so when we talk about employees downtown, does that include municipal employees?
No, all municipal employees have free parking in one of our adjacent lots.
All the municipal employees have been moved out of the Park Street Lot and are now in various lots, that the Locust Lot and some of the Vine Cottage and Red Cross Lots and things like that.
So they have permits in effect as well for those additional lots?
Yes, you could argue it.
You know, I think one relevant thing is here, we really don't have any pay private parking lots, or at least very, very few. So the relevant market for parking. or at least very, very few. Um, so the relevant market for parking is really the office buildings that have free parking for their employees. The uh, the like Bank of America that has a lot that they jealously guard and and uh, they manage their lot, but I I don't believe anybody pays to park there. So there's kind of a standard of free parking for employees in in New Canaan. And uh, but again, this is a juggling act to make sure you know who 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 they are, who they work for, or at least that they're not a commuter, and they're trying to gain the system with with getting a free commuter space.
And one last question, sorry, one last question. In terms of employees who work in the evening, late afternoon evenings in the restaurants and so forth, are there, is there an hourly limit, for instance, where they'll be able to park, for instance, in Morse Court or on Elm Street or what have you, even if they're an employee, so they're not walking to center, center lot or Locust?
Well, the practical answer is we stop enforcing parking uh, around four o'clock.
Four o'clock.
So you can park in in any of these lots uh, after that time. And we all do, right, when we go to restaurants. You don't have to pay, or you can just park there.
I just, I was inquiring about the workers though, but yeah, okay, yeah, very good. Thank you.
Yeah. But I have this chart up, just so you see, the 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 dollar figures I gave you are right from here. There's the 42,000 we collect on Locust in a normal year, 35,000. Together those two are your 78,000. That's potentially what we're giving up. And again, unless we sell more permits and unless we see an improvement in, you know, on Main and Elm and and Morse Court, then uh, you know, if we do see that, we do see more permits being sold and more openings in those places, then this program will have been a success. If we don't see that, then it will have been a failure. And then then I will, I will probably come back to you and say, let's reinstitute uh, charging the the same kind of permits that, you know, that we're doing here.
Hey, it's Laura here from the chamber. And and I just wanna add kind of a historical perspective, having worked down here since 2012. The employee piece is the crux to the whole parking issue. It's the linchpin on which all, any complaint about parking, I can't find a space, et cetera, et cetera. And I agree with Tucker. I don't think people mind paying a couple bucks. And we're gonna hopefully explore, you know, a a mobile pay for some of those uh, lots. But um, you know, unless we solve this, uh, and and you know, the chamber is really on board in communicating, will work uh, very closely with Stacy and her team and the First Selectman's Office to get this communicated and let let these employees know, you know, we're very business friendly here and we're gonna offer you this free service. Um, we begged them this summer, when the weather was nice, to please park in Center and Locust, and they didn't. When it was, you know, as hospitable as it could be. Um, and I think we're, we're especially helping out the hourly worker here. Um, and you know, in exchange for walking an extra three minutes, uh, they get to park for free in a safe place uh, all day.
Laura, just to be clear, you said they didn't, when you begged them?
They did, they did not. They did not. You know, we begged them, please, please. You know, I had a merchant on Morse, Morse Court in my office, you know, multiple times complaining his customers can't find a space. Uh, you know, we sent emails, you know, we have a great database of uh, the retail merchants. And um, you know, we we reached out to them multiple times uh, as business, as the downtown, you know, uh, came alive and implored them that these are their customers and they're blocking space for their customers. And everyone thinks that it's just them that's parking there. And you know, that just multiplies. Um, and Center School was wide open all all summer and Morse Court was jam-packed and there was no fluidity. All we want here is fluidity.
We have received a comment. Do you want me to, uh, about this, uh, from somebody, Kevin? Do you want me to read it?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, this came from Megan Wonderlick, who um, has had a business in downtown for several years. And she writes, "Having worked in downtown New Canaan for the past 10 years, when a lot is available and you need to make it to your job on time, it makes most sense to park in a space that is available and closest to your place of work. As a person who has spent many hours and much money in town buying lunch, running errands, shopping, because that's where I spend most of my daily time, has the town considered thinking about local business employees differently? And as the revenue generators for the local business ecosystem, building out economic development opportunities to bring in more businesses, more people to work in the downtown and redrawing traffic flow for new parking solutions seems to make more sense rather than focusing on the current 800,000 in tax revenue coming from the current plans. Adding more people who work in town, who will shop there and eat there, bringing in much more tax revenue over time, especially considering the community patterns most COVID, post-COVID, seems to make the most sense. What are the town's plans for economic development?" question mark.
Well, I would say we're trying to address that comment with this proposal, the set of recommendations.
Tucker, was that comment submitted just today by email or was that comment previously?
That just came into the BOS distribution.
Okay. Yeah, I think the uh, this is not a revenue game, as I said before. This is trying to make parking work for both our residents and our workers. And um, you know, it's something that uh, we're experimenting right now in a, in an environment when we we don't know what's normal because everyone's home from Manhattan and they go to lunch. So, you know, and 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 it's a very unusual environment to try to figure out what's exactly the right answer. That's why we probably will reevaluate this after we experiment with this for the first half of next year and then see where we are. Hopefully, we're back to normal next summer and and we'll see whether this is the right balance.
Yeah, again, from my standpoint, I'd love to see a trial where um, you you have save, still have free parking at Morse Court, but you impose time limits because I think time limits act as a stick. Um, and you know, you get it, if you, if you, if you breach the time limit, you get a ticket.
Well, Nick, we, you know, we can do that. I mean, you know, the reality is, with the meter lots, we we could set rules. I'd like to make a point here. The Parking Commission uh, does great work making recommendations. But at the end of the day, it's this board that decides what we're gonna do with parking and the parking department manages the lots. And I have one bit of difference with Keith in terms of the uh, the proposal on the uh, Locust Lot and the Center Lot. I think people that wanna go to Locust for a couple hours should be able to park nearest the street and not have to find a space way over in the back. So I I think if you're gonna get a free permit, we want you to park where we want you to park in that lot and not take the premier spaces right next to the street.
Yeah, that's good. Listen, Keith, Keith has done, and his, the commission's done a fabulous job over the years. I will give Keith, Keith special kudos. You know, he always uh, submits his annual report on time, which is is pursuant to uh, you know, governing law, unlike, unlike certain other bodies who shall remain nameless. Keith, Keith, you do a great job.
So Nick, or Kathleen, if you wanna tweak this further, I mean, I I I think the recommendations make sense and that it's it's a good time to experiment. We're also trying to get totally electronic in our renewals and uh, uh, so so we know not only who you are, hopefully where you work and what your license plate number is, so we can become much more effective. I was thinking this morning how effective Amazon is dealing with people getting something to them the next day or even the same day. And we're only trying to keep track of 14,000 adults.
Yeah, I did wanna mention just on the finance side, apart from giving up the revenue for charging for permits for those two lots, there there is no readily identifiable cost to this. I mean, Stacy's team will have to work a little harder to take these permits and uh, but but apart, you know, there is no real cost other than the foregone revenue. So I hope, but I hope you do take it as an integrated proposal because uh, that's really what it is. It it, they're all linked together, all these pieces. Um, and I would say if we wanna tinker, I would say, can we try this program now? And then see how it works and then use the knowledge we'll gain and then tinker from there. Anyhow, I'm done. That's the press, those are the recommendations of the Parking Commission. And thanks to everyone involved, which is many of the people on, whose faces I'm seeing now.
Thank you, Keith. Are you ready to vote? Do you have any further uh, refinements? I I I think the recommendations make sense. And uh, so I move that we approve the recommendations as set forth in Keith's proposal and as recommended, I mean, I'm inspired by the Parking Commission.
Second.
Further discussion, Nick?
No.
Okay, all favor? Okay, Keith and Stacy.
Thank you.
Tucker and Laura. So that brings us back to uh, the agenda, item number 12. There's a handful of tax overpayments for vehicles and a couple of real estate on our tablets. Any questions? I will be approve these refunds.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? That's approved. And then contracts, there's five or four or five contracts under $10,000. Any questions about those? All right, so I um, I have a few comments I would make on the COVID front. Um, as you know, we are doing community testing six days a week now. We're waving Life Care Center. Thanks Kathleen, this is Chairman of the Board. We have Life Care Center. So thank you, Kathleen. Thank you, Ross Sparksdale. This is tremendous resource for us to be able to have, making convenient testing available. It's a bit of a lottery. Um, uh, I would emphasize anybody who has symptoms of COVID-19 should get tested immediately and not wait to find a day of of testing that uh, and there's many places to get tested immediately, um, with a doctor's recommendation, including Stanford Hospital, Milwaukee Hospital, Tully Center, various places that are having uh, walk-up testing. And um, so the testing is not designed to be your place if you feel like you're ill. It's designed to give us an overall gauge of what's happening in town. The superintendent has decided to stand up Physician One this Friday at New Canaan High School in Saks for probably 500 students and teachers, um, to get a read on what's going on in the schools, especially the week after Thanksgiving. So that will give us a good read on what's going on and hopefully be able to keep the schools open for in-person learning. And um, any questions about COVID? Yeah. Town Hall has gone to cohorts, so that we um, spread people out a little more and don't have the possibility of a whole department being out sick. If someone gets sick, we've only had a few positive cases on the town staff across the, across the departments. Um, and the uh, so I think that's the COVID report. Um, tomorrow, Tucker has an ever-source gas meeting. We're trying to encourage the downtown merchants on Pine Street, Grove Street, um, Elm Street, west of Park and uh, over on Locust to uh, sign up for gas, so they will be motivated to bring the gas pipelines next year uh, into that, further downtown New Canaan. Um, and um, um, what else? Um, we're actually working on budget preparations. We're gonna have some meetings next week with some uh, department directors. And um, finally, we're about to go up, oh, FEMA reimbursement. Linda's on. I think we've actually got good news. We're gonna get a check from the state.
Hopefully, it won't bounce. I'm on, yes. Hopefully, it won't bounce. You're right. No, so we did receive yesterday, and I was looking for the exact amount, but a little over 190,000.
Eighty, eight thirty seven sixty two.
There you go. Uh, what he said. Um, so we got that from the state, and this is based on the um, the application that we had submitted between the town and the Board of Ed for reimbursement for FY20 expenses through the state. Um, these are items that we did not pass through FEMA. And therefore, what we're now waiting on, because the state said, whatever you send through FEMA, whatever they approve, we will fund. I mean, they'll, they'll approve 75%. The state will pick up the other 25%. Now, at the time when the state's deadline for filing, we had not yet heard from FEMA, so we did not know what that 25 portion would be. And so what they've indicated to us is, when you do hear from FEMA and you know that they funded X amount and 25% of that is Y, you can turn around and submit to us that piece of approved FEMA that was not funded, the the 25%. And so we don't know what that number is because FEMA is still reviewing our application and they'll tell us what that amount is. But the state has indicated that we can go back to them for that 25%. Um, additionally, they have also said that they will also review whatever FEMA totally throws out. Uh, we don't know what that number is either, but if FEMA does say there's a, there's a request and they, they say, you know, we're not gonna fund any of this. Uh, the state has said, you can send it to us, we'll review it, and we'll see if we fund any of that um, or not. And so that's the other piece uh, that we're waiting, that we're waiting to hear. But we also, um, on Wednesday, just before, just after we left for Thanksgiving, uh, we also received um, an ACH from the state for the Board of Ed side. And these are grant funds, um, through uh, the grant programs uh, for COVID through the state. Um, and we received on their behalf about $330,000 um, for COVID-related reimbursements. This is in addition to the 90-some thousand that we have received from them early on. Now, that was to be split between the private schools. Um, and so I spoke to Joanne yesterday, and they're trying to determine of that 330, um, if all of that is theirs, if some of that is to be shared. And so they still have some questions on that, and they've put in a question to the state. I haven't heard from Joanne yet today to see where where that is, but that's the latest on on those reimbursements.
So these reimbursements become revenues for fiscal year '21, which we're gonna need to make up for the parking revenue lost. They also, you know, these were expenses that um, increased our unanticipated expenses for last fiscal year. But it's nice to begin to get to get the COVID dollars that we hoped we would get from the feds. They're really passing through the state. Go ahead, Kathleen.
Yeah, great news. Thank you. Thank you, Linda. So um, just to understand, are are we the first town, uh, or have other towns been receiving the same from the state, or they're all being addressed at the same time? Is that, those funds are just coming forward now to all the towns who requested reimbursement?
They're starting to come through because I sent out, I believe it was last week on Tuesday, I sent to a couple of finance directors on the board of the Connecticut Finance Officers, just to kind of sense, um, who's gotten what. Um, and so a couple of them had started to receive. But the big chunk um, came yesterday because November 30th was the state's deadline to audit. And so they started, um, they completed the audit of the expenses. And so those, the balance were notified yesterday. So everybody should know um, by now what they've received or not, um, from the state, if they had submitted their applications in time.
And what's the estimated uh, time we hope that the FEMA funds might come our way?
Unfortunately, we don't have a timeline. Um, and I checked, um, I don't believe any one of my colleagues has yet seen FEMA funds. There may be some out there, but not the ones that I've polled. And so we honestly don't know what that is. Uh, the second piece to this is the state has also said that once they were complete with the June 30th expenses, which is what this process was, they will then open it up for expenses uh, beginning July 1. Um, and as you know, on the town side, um, you know, we approved the 400 plus the 1.5 million to the Board of Ed. All of those are June 1. And on the town side, we've also incurred about 350,000 this fiscal year of COVID. So once the state opens that up, we'll know um, the guidelines and and what, when, when to turn those in.
So the system works. Glad to hear that.
Yeah, all the CARES Act funds have to be spent or committed by December 31. And I think now there's anticipation there'll be further federal dollars approved sometime in the next 30 to 60 days to. So that's good news on the budget front. Uh, finally, um, Linda is preparing RFP for banking services. And um, I think that's all I have. Kathleen?
I just had uh, just one item this past week, uh, and and Tucker's aware of this as well. Kevin, you may be. Um, just got an inquiry from a, a family that's that's moved into town. They're renting, they're gonna be buying a place. And there's, it's an issue about blight. And you know, just, you know, they were looking for a pathway to to reach out to, whether it was the police, is there, or uh, is there a blight officer?
We have a blight officer in Brian Plast, and we also have a blight committee.
Great. Okay. So how, so how do I advise this family to uh, get to the right people?
Thanks. Yeah, um, Kathleen, they spoke with Pam last week, and she did um, tell them the process in which they need to file that with Brian Plast.
Okay.
They should.
They, he reached out to me again yesterday, uh, asking, so I'm, I'll, I'll follow up.
Yeah, he definitely got that information. I heard her.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
And then for the next meeting, we'll have a number of renewals or reappointments to boards and commissions that expire today. Or at least, and then Kathleen, hopefully the Fields Committee will get a memo done and the Parks Recreation Commission will take up your pesticides use review and we will have that on the agenda for the December next, next meeting.
Great, so it's the Fields Committee report. I got the Tom Irwin report. And I think we're going to see maybe a new version of John's report, John Howes' report, Tiger, is that right? Or, I think I saw an early draft or?
We'll be looking through that as well.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
So, so unfortunately, I guess tragically, it seems that we've had an illegal puppy farm in town, which is a horrible story. Kevin, about a year ago, I had raised the issue of the animal control facility at the transfer station, which I didn't think was worthy of the town of New Canaan and expressed my, my criticisms. Nothing against Allison, who I think is terrific, or animal control officer. But I think, you know, the, the town pound, if you will, is dark and dank and, and just, you know, I thought we could do better. And then Select Endeavor agreed and we discussed options, potentially upgrading that facility or outsourcing, as I think other towns do. And I think at that time, you had said you would look into this through a study. Any, any results from that study?
I wouldn't characterize it as dark and dank, Nick.
Have you been in there?
I went over and looked at it and I think.
I guess one gating question, I don't know the answer. I mean, there are a bunch of, bunch of puppies.
The key is it's used very little, but it's humane. There is a West Coast study going on about doing regional animal control consolidation with towns working together. So that study is ongoing. Allison has been participating in that. But I think, you know, what we currently have is humane and it's not used very, very often. And we also have the option to put pets up.
Are all the dogs from this illegal puppy farm there now?
I haven't gotten a report since.
Right, I know some of them have been.
Some of the dogs are housed elsewhere. Some are housed here, some are housed elsewhere.
And Tiger, remind me, isn't, don't we need a new roof for that facility?
The roof will be needing replacement, yeah. We just put in a new heating system in there for some temporary heat yesterday, to try to make sure that they can make it through the winter with no problem. Allison was there for that installation, so, as well as the fire marshal. So they're, they're satisfied with what we did to raise the heat through there. And we are looking at a redo of the entire top there, the two incinerators that are left, possibly removing those and reconfiguring the transfer station and the salt storage and things of that nature. And with that would be a look towards what we would do with the animal control officer and her location.
I mean, are there any other locations in town that would be suitable? We have a lot, we own a lot of property in town.
There is, we might have other areas where we could place them temporarily, yeah. But the, nothing suitable as of, as of yet rises to the top where we would say, let's move them there permanently.
How many dogs are currently being housed?
I thought it was six. I don't want to be quoted on that, but I think it was six, six puppies.
We have, we have other issues on that Butler Lane residence, so. Anything else?
Nothing for me.
I move we adjourn at 9:48.
Second.
Okay, thank you all. See you in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.